...for their dedication, personal sacrifice, and desire to serve the townspeople. Regardless of the outcome of the election, I applaud and thank them for their candidacy and for past and future service. Secondly, I'd like to thank the following for putting tonight together: Hudson Senior Center and their staff, I could be used in the setup of the halls, H U D T V and Metro West News for covering the event, Sarah Pressy and the Asset Valley Chamber of Commerce, and volunteers Biggie and Elian Levine and Chuck Randall. I'd like to take a minute to kind of go over the rules for this evening. There will be four candidates, one candidate for constable, and three candidates for the school committee. The constable candidate will get to speak first, and he'll have two minutes to address the audience. And because there isn't a second person, he will not have any questions, he will simply be having us two minutes. The three candidates for the school committee are vying for two positions. Speaker rotation will be determined by a frame of drawing which we did earlier, and they're sitting in that sequence now. Each candidate will get a two-minute opening statement, then they will have questions from the audience, and they will get two minutes to answer the questions, and each candidate will answer the same question. And then there'll be two minutes to each candidate for closing statements. Audience questions are encouraged, but must be written on the index cards and handed in to the collectors who it is Chuck Randall there. As we have limited time, we may combine and edit questions. And so, we want it to be questions, not statements, and not county words, not negative words. I will start off by using a question from Liz that I've developed ahead of time, except that I have a question, so we'll start right off with the questions. I do have some backup questions, though we don't have enough questions for the audience. It is my intention to move the meeting along quickly so that everyone gets to speak. Maximum number of questions and yet keep the meeting from running too long. Timekeepers are set up on the front row here, or timekeeper. So, there will be a 30-second white warning sign, there'll be a 10-second orange warning sign, and then there'll be a red stop sign. In order to be as fair as possible, I will strictly enforce the time limits. If a candidate runs over, I might give them a five-second grace period, at which point I will cut them off, but anything left unsaid, they can put into their closing statement. So, the meeting sequence, I'll start with George and let him introduce himself, and he'll have two minutes to go over it, and then we'll start with the opening statement afterwards for the school committee.
Thank you.
George Ramon.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Nice to see everybody here, wish there were more people, but anyway, I'm running for constable. I'm, remarkably at this time, as a selector for many, many years around here, you know that. And, so anyway, but I'm retired now. I got plenty of time to do this job, and you've gotta be, have time during the day, go to courts and stuff like that, and serve different papers, and for legal papers, either a constable would serve, or a sheriff, or deputy sheriff. So, we have our, we have three here in town. And that, and with, there's one opening right now, and that's why I'm running right now. And I appreciate your vote, and I'm experienced, and you know, I know the area, I've been here for a hundred years, so...
One year less than you.
So, anyway, but I, I know, I know the people, and I, you know, I like people, and I get along with people, and maybe that's what somebody has to have. So, when you serve them a paper, it's not a luxurious job, no less, like when you run for select, and you have an idea what you want for the town, to make it better, you know, our school committee or something like that, but constable, you hate to see a constable come to your house, or whatever, out of your business. But anyway, I appreciate it, I'll do a good job for you, I know the people, and I, I, like I said, I am retired now, so I got plenty of time to do it, go to courts and stuff like that, there's a lot of paperwork to do, and I would appreciate your vote if I can get it, all right, I appreciate it. Thanks very much. And, any questions? I won't, I won't serve you.
Okay, so this is not, this is not a question format, so they have to write the questions. They'll, they have to write the question. Anybody got it written? Any suggestions?
I didn't know.
Okay, thank you, George.
Okay, thank you very much. Thank you.
Okay. We're gonna do, uh...
Thank you.
Opening statements, and we'll start with Liz.
Hi, I'm Liz Paulsworth, Elizabeth Paulsworth. I've been a Hudson resident for 12 years, I know for those of you that live on and raised here, that doesn't seem very long, actually 17 years, sorry. That doesn't seem very long, but that's longer than I've lived anyplace else ever in my life, so Hudson is home. We moved here shortly before we had kids, and we made the conscious decision to move to a town like Hudson because of the schools. We did a lot, Newton, or one of the W towns, we wanted a more balanced education for our kids, and so we settled here. I have been on school committee for four years, this is my third election. I've always been an education geek, I majored in education in high school, I was part of a living and learning community, if you know what those are, where we got to visit many schools, many different, see many different pedagogies. I am a special, I'm certified in special ed and regular education, I also have a master's in behavioral education. I sell many teaching and administrative positions, so I've seen schools from many different sides. My latest position was working with DESI, which was still DOE at the time, under the Exploring Options for Children with Autism grant, and that was doing training and consultation and program development, and Hudson was one of the towns that I actually got to train. I trained one of your police officers, Officer Dowling, I believe it was, about three days before I gave birth to my daughter, so he was afraid I would go into labor at the time. I think I'll tell you my why. I started, I had a grant for school committee the first time, when my kids were younger, it was the first year that we were Level 3 on MCAS, and I panicked, and the internet wasn't what it was at the time, and social media, so I called the superintendent and asked why, and how can I help? And I, we started a group at Farley, which did the first STEM night to get parents involved in the curriculum.
Okay, thank you. All right, next, Rebecca.
So, I'm Rebecca Wexner, I'm a resident of Hudson, I've lived here for about eight years. My husband and I moved here when we were deciding, right after we got married, we started a family here, I have three small children, they're all under the age of five, so I have a strong investment in the success of Hudson Public Schools. My professional background is of a clinical psychologist with a specialty in pediatrics, and currently the chief of pediatric behavioral health services for a major multidisciplinary medical group. And so, previous to becoming a clinical psychologist, I was a school psychologist for many years, I've worked in multiple districts across the state, in other states as well, so I'm familiar with working on a team, I enjoy working within a system to affect positive change, and I think that there's a lot of things that are happening in Hudson that look really promising, and part of what I like to do as a person professionally and personally is to get involved, to try to further success and work together collaboratively with the, you know, colleagues on the school committee as well as in the school department, just really to try to make things a little bit more effective. Obviously, with three small children, I have a kindergartner now, I will have two in quick succession over the next three years, so, you know, it's really very important to both myself and my husband to have a strong education foundation for our children, and so really being part of the school committee to me seems, you know, something that made sense just in terms of the way that I approach systems, and wanting to make sure that the progress and the shift that have happened over the course of the last few years in Hudson Public Schools continues, so.
Okay. Thank you. Good evening.
Hi, my name's Steve Smith, I have a son in 4th grade at Mulready. I grew up in Hudson, had moved away for a little bit, and lived in other areas around here, but when my son became of school age, I knew I wanted to move back to Hudson just based on the experiences I had had as a child. I still have a lot of the friends that I made when I was younger, and had great experiences and fond memories of those times, and want that for my son. One of the reasons I chose to get involved in school committee was because when I moved back, I felt the schools weren't necessarily as good as they could be, not that they were bad, but in my mind, I just didn't feel like they were great yet, and I wanted to do what I could to make a difference. Kind of reflecting back, now that I'm running for reelection, it's interesting because you kind of are forced to look at what's been accomplished. And looking back, there's quite a bit over the last three years, some of the key things, I think, are, a new superintendent's been hired, we're working to get the budget in a better position to move forward, that's been in a tough spot for a while. We've introduced more programming at the middle school, and for me, the hope with that is that more kids will find their life's passion through exposure to different experiences. In addition to that, we've also introduced more STEM programming at the elementary levels, which I think is great for students, gives them more opportunities, and we've also shifted resources to meet the needs of students who haven't necessarily had enough resources dedicated to them in the past. Has it all gone perfectly? I wouldn't say it has, but I am proud of the changes we've made. The reason I'm running for reelection is because I feel like I still have more to give, and I'm a collaborator and hope to make things better with whatever groups in place and with input from folks like yourselves.
Thank you. All right, we'll start the first question with Rebecca. How do you think the schedule change at the Quinn Middle School and its elective offerings are working out? Have you had any kind of feedback?
So, having, I don't have a middle schooler, and obviously I've not been part of school committee, so I'm familiar indirectly with a lot of the changes that have happened at Quinn. I understand that there were some significant shifts this, at this current academic year, and that there are currently ongoing conversations around how to improve the changes. I don't know, because it doesn't, I don't know that it's gonna release what the updated format's going to look like. I understand that there's a lot of new electives that are being offered, as Stephen mentioned, a lot of, you know, focus on the STEM and STEAM, discipline, and I think that there's a lot of opportunity. I think middle school is a challenging time, there's a lot of, there's a lot of variability in development and cognitive skills across 5th through 8th grade, or I guess it's 5th or 7th grade in Hudson, and so there's significant differences between a 5th grader and a 7th grader, and so I think whatever the changes are going to be made moving forward, I would hope account for that developmental change that occurs from 5th to 7th grade. The brain of a 5th grader is significantly different, the executive function of a 5th grader is significantly different than that of a 7th grader, and so making sure that that is accounted for in the, whatever the schedule change. So, that's my experience with it.
Okay, Stephen.
Thanks. So, I was part of the changes at Quinn, and I will say I was in favor of them. When I've spoken to people about the changes, I fully admit, having gone through the process, that it could have gone differently in terms of communication, collaboration with the community, making sure people are aware of what's going on, that feedback was received, and we've been working to make progress there as a committee. I do think the changes were positive, and another thing I've said to folks I've communicated with about this is that I fully expected after year one, there would be enhancements we'd need to make to the programs there, the schedule would be a possibility based on the feedback we had received. So, I think the good thing is, for me, the process is working to some extent, where parents have provided feedback, and now we're working to make enhancements to the programs and scheduling at the middle school, which will be rolled, rolled out shortly. In terms of feedback that I've gotten, I have gotten positive feedback from folks, there's been some feedback that hasn't been so positive, but I'd say I've gotten some on both sides. It tends to be that those who have had positive feedbacks have kind of pulled me aside, or indirectly provided that feedback to me, so I know that not everyone has necessarily agreed with all the changes, but I would say that overall, they've been positive, and like I said in my opening statement, for me, one of the big motivators was really to provide students with more opportunities, more exposure to different opportunities, so again, they can hopefully find their life's passion.
Okay, Liz.
Well, Steve kind of said it all, since we were in this together, so I agree with everything he said, let's see what else I could add on to that. Our kids are getting a lot of different opportunities, and through parent feedback and teacher feedback, we're finding maybe it was too many, and we are self-correcting on that, we are having teachers input into making the best schedule possible, which we will be looking at very shortly. But those opportunities have really provided kids that might not do well in their core courses, other opportunities to demonstrate their learning and be great at something. So, I think those are very important opportunities to provide kids at that age. Steve went over all the nitty-gritty, and yeah, we hear from people on both sides, people that don't like it are the ones who are more likely to show up and tell you about it, but that's something important for us to hear, because we know we need to then go around and do some digging, and we then hear positive things as well. And we can't let those voices be drowned out.
So, next, your question, I will start with Steve. What have you done or proposed to do to increase access to STEM, science, technology, and mathematics?
Yeah.
Engineering.
Engineering, yeah. So, what we, have we done? I mean, as a committee, we've done a lot at the elementary level, we've brought in different STEM programs this year to expose kids at a younger age, we've talked about the things we've done at the middle school a bit, where we've introduced STEM there also, Project Lead the Way's been a big part of that. We've worked to get, find creative ways to get funding for those programs through Project Lead the Way, and those, I value those programs, because I think a lot of the STEM areas are where the future is for our kids. And again, I, I can't stress enough, just exposure to those things, Liz hit on it, not all kids are gonna focus on the key areas, or key focus areas that school traditionally focuses on, so I do feel like it's important to expose kids to different things, and you'll probably hear that as a theme as I talk, but I just think that that's important, and as parents, I, as a parent, I try to do that, but I also wanna bring that to other kids who maybe their families can't do it on their own, the schools give them an opportunity to do that.
I have to stop going after Steve. I think it's really important to expose our kids to STEM, and it's important to do it young. We've started in kindergarten, if you go on our website, public school website, you can see videos of our kindergarten teachers doing a lesson with the Lord riding, like blowing down houses, and they're using little leaf blowers, and it's fantastic, and these kids will never forget that lesson. Steve mentioned the electives and Project Lead the Way, we've gotten grants, and we have, and Farley School has been running a STEAM program, which is the science, technology, engineering, math, and arts. And it will be very interesting when we get their MCAS scores back this year to see if there's been any improvement that we might see. Leading back to that, there is some good research saying that STEAM programs increase test scores in all places, not that test scores are the most important thing, but if we do see that increase from that pilot program, it'll be something for us to continue to explore, and we'd love to expand that program. It's excellent.
Okay. All right.
So, I would probably agree with a lot of what Steve and Liz have said, I think embedding STEAM and STEM through the, out the curriculum, starting at a young age, is critically important, with more specific targeted opportunities as kids get older and are more available for, for those types of opportunities. So, I think all the pilots that they were describing sound really wonderful, I know my kindergartner has come home with really wonderful projects that critically involves STEM concepts and ideas, it's not, obviously it's not explicit, but it's certainly embedded throughout the curriculum, and to me, that's everything I know and have read about that domain, is, is it's really important, as Steve had mentioned and Liz had mentioned, that, you know, there's lots of exposure from a young age with more increasing, you know, with increasing specificity as kids get older and are more available to take advantage of the specific opportunities. I understand that at the high school, there's a lot, there's a more focus on offering very specific classes and electives that are really focused on this area, and I think that's super exciting.
Okay, next question for Liz. According to a recent ranking report by U S News, Hudson's graduation rate is only 80 percent. What is the school system doing to increase the graduation rate?
Well, we, being such a small district, every person that doesn't graduate is a large percentage. We know of every person that didn't graduate, we take all that data and look at it, and why aren't kids finishing school, and for the most part in Hudson, it's because they are dropping out to work, it's mostly Hispanic males, and so that is a population we really need to target, we need to see if we can make work opportunities where they can go to school and work right now. We tried to set them up with a GED program, that does not count towards graduation, it still counts as a dropout for us, but we do not abandon them, we want them to continue their education. We are looking at some other high school initiatives, and one of them is a later start time. I do wonder how that will affect the dropout rate, if it will go up or down, we need to look at other schools and how that has happened, and we need to keep kids interested, I mean, there comes time, when budget comes around, there's always, what are, what are we gonna cut, and, you know, we never wanna cut the sports programs, or the arts programs, or the after-school programs, because we need to keep kids interested and keep kids there.
So, obviously, I don't know what's happening currently, but I can tell you that my, you know, my research indicates that the, one of the biggest reasons that, so there's a lot of risk factors that go toward a dropout, or a failure to complete high school, and so what we know is that when kids are connected to a trusted adult, they have a mentor-type relationship with an adult through high school, that that significantly decreases the likelihood that they'll go ahead and drop out. So, you know, to me, it seems like one of the programs that may exist, I'm not familiar with it, but I think would certainly benefit from additional support would be around behavioral health support. So, we know that a lot of these kids who are struggling to manage the multitude of demands that they have on them, also have some significant, or at risk for significant behavioral health needs, and so what we know, you know, in some of the districts that I've worked in previously, a lot of the work that I do currently is working with kids, identifying risk factors, and identifying opportunities to increase the support, to target the needs that clearly are driving them to not feel connected at school, to not be able to have the various needs that are, you know, leading them to discontinue their education. As Liz mentioned, the after-school activities, I think, are critical, at the same time, there's a balance between offering that, and then also the need for kids to have some flexible time in their schedule, but also some additional support, because if a child is dropping out, because they need, you know, to be able to work to help support their family, they're also probably not likely to participate in after-school activities, so making sure that that there's a system in place within the department, within the, within the school, primarily the guidance department, to make sure that there is a way to track these kids, identify them, and provide the necessary supports to, to prevent them from, from discontinuing their education.
Okay, Steve.
I don't know how I add to that. They covered so much. I, what I would say is, Liz mentioned a little bit about the specific demographic that tends to be not completing, and what I've learned and come to respect, I think, more than I even did before, is that each child's an individual, and each child has specific circumstances that impact them, and it's important that we understand what each child needs, what situations or things outside of school are impacting them, so that we can help them. And I think we've, we've started to put more in place, knowing that the drop, the lack of graduation in some cases isn't as high as we'd like it to be. It's really, for me, monitoring those students who are leaving, trying to find the warning signs of what is causing them to leave, working with guidance like Rebecca had mentioned, I, I think it's just, with some of these things, there's no blanket answer, it really is just getting down to the individual, what's driving them to make the decisions they're making, and figuring out how can we really help them complete their education, because that's ultimately gonna benefit them in the long run, and helping them understand that, but realizing, in some cases, people have to work, they have to drop out to work to feed the family or help the family, and you can't really compete with that, but you wanna help them through the process the best you can, while also allowing them to complete their education.
Okay, next question is for Rebecca. Do you favor a change, or the change, in zero-based budgeting, and how it has impacted the budget since the change was put in place?
So, I'm not, so I, obviously I have not been part of the decision-making, so I don't know exactly when the zero-based budgeting was put in place, my, I will be frank, that I don't have a ton of experience with that specifically. I think, though, that anytime we're trying to operate under very strict conditions, it forces changes that may not always make sense. And so, from my perspective, it seems like making sure that there is an equal balance between making sure that the necessary funding is available to meet the needs of the district at large, but also recognize that there are some things that might require some additional flexibility, you know, there's, anytime I hear anything that has to, you know, that's very like zero-based, meaning no additions, no subtractions, or, you know, no, no growth over time, I think in education, it's a very challenging subject, I think budget in education is a, is a complex issue, and there's a lot of factors that go into it that have nothing to do with Hudson. And so, I, from my perspective, it seems like it's really about making sure that the conversations that are going on around developing a budget and maintaining a budget really are focused on making sure that there are thoughtful and strategic decisions that are being made as opposed to trying to adhere to very strict and seemingly arbitrary conditions.
So, I'm in favor of zero-based budgeting, I think really what it forces you to do is look at what are your needs today, it's not building a budget based on what last year's budget was, it really makes people build the case for what do we need now, why do we need it, how does it compare to other things we need, as opposed to just saying everyone gets a blanket, every cost center gets a blanket 2.5 percent increase, or whatever the percentage is, it's really looking at how many students are using each service, and then doing the math to figure out what, what should we be paying for that service for those number of students. Unfortunately, I mean, we live in a world where financial resources are not limited, I wish we could have more for all of our students, but it's just, it's a point where we need to make trade-offs, which is always challenging. But it's a key thing to do, and I think it's a valuable exercise each year to make sure that you are spending the money on the highest needs areas, for example, some of the groups within the school system that were struggling the most really weren't getting extra financial resources in the past that were needed to make them successful, and that goes back a little bit to my earlier comments about each student's individual, most students who struggle more need more help, and that's where we need to focus the dollars, and it's not at the expense of other students, but you have to find a way to balance that, I mean, we want all students to succeed. I'm highly in favor of zero-based, just because it forces you to go through the process of prioritizing every single year, which I think is a good one.
I went after Steve again. I love zero-based budgeting, for the first time, I feel like we have a real budget, we know how much money we have to spend, it was put where it was needed, we were able to shift money from programs that were not as critical to programs that were very critical. It allows us to look at our district improvement plan and decide where are we spending that money that's critical. We, in the past, had just gone on that two and a quarter, two and a half percent increase, we're gonna get it every year. Well, as staff, salaries, and benefits take up more and more of our budget, that leaves less and less of our budget for critical materials and moving forward. We've been actually able to add programs, even with our limited budget, by doing zero-based budgeting.
Okay. Next question will be for Steve.
Sorry, Liz.
One more time.
With keeping an eye on taxes in town, how will you work to control the school's
I think it's a good follow-up to the zero-based budget question, because I think, like the school budget itself, the district- because I think like the school budget itself, the district budget, we should be building the case for why we need those funds each year. I think we've worked to do a better job of that over the last few years where we're really presenting, what is the money providing for students? What are we getting for those funds? I mean, any government-funded activities are really going to require trade-offs because everyone wants more money. I mean, that's true outside of government. And I think just generally being able to paint the picture of how the money's being used. And then at the end of the day, communicating what are the results of that? Because that's so important. And I think sometimes that can get brushed over. The budget can be passed, we can request money from the town, and then it's kind of brushed over. But I think it's important to show what results we're getting because we need to make improvements. Like I mentioned in my opening statement, looking to kind of improve the district, make things better. And I want to see us paint that picture because ultimately, we may need to ask for more money from the town. And if that's the case, we need to show results. To me, that's what it's all about. If we're going to get more money, we need to show results. And if we do that, I feel like that only helps us as opposed to, kind of going back to the zero-based versus traditional budgeting, that's what zero-based is all about. Show me the results, show me what we need moving forward to continue or improve those results in the areas of need.
Again, Steve summed it up. But also, we've cut the fat. And I see a couple of people in here that have come to budget meetings. Everything has gone over. We look at how much we spend on papers and pens, electricity, licenses for computer programs. And as our needs shift, we sometimes get rid of those programs. If they're not being used, we get rid of them. We don't keep things around that we don't need. And I think it's really important to show that to our taxpayers. I wish more people came to our budget meetings because there's deep discussion about what are you going to give up? We cut all the fat and then there's nothing left, and then we have to start giving up things that hurt. And we need to go around the table and come to consensus about what that's going to be. So as much as we don't want taxes to go up, we also want to keep up our school systems. And without a strong school system, your property values are going to go down. And we need to do it for our kids. Who wants to live in a place that doesn't have a great school system? So we will continue to do the best we can with what we have, but there may be a day that we need to ask for more. We want to show you how physically responsible we've been, so we're doing our part all the time.
I mean, I think I probably would agree with a lot of what Stephen and Liz have said in that, you know, I think anytime you're trying to fund something like a school district that has, you know, there's multiple layers of pressure. There's statewide influences on how much and how the funding can be allocated. To me, I think I would echo what Stephen and Liz have said in that, you know, it really comes down to proving success through various programs. I think the pilot programs that they were describing, as well as additional pilot programs that can be implemented. To me, that's, I mean, in my work, in the organization that I work in currently, I'm in behavioral health. Behavioral health is a consistent money loser in the field of healthcare. We operate at a loss of $4 million a year. And that's without, that's just because, that's just the way that healthcare operates. They don't reimburse for behavioral health services. So we're constantly having to come up with ways to justify expansion, additional services. And so, you know, what I have discovered in my role there, my leadership role in the organization I'm at, is really around finding programs and developing programs that are geared towards success so that you can justify the request for additional funding. And I think in a town like Hudson, there's, in any town really, but there's no unlimited funding. And so it's about being physically responsible, but also very thoughtful about making sure that the programs that are in place are successful to be able to encourage or justify and strengthen the argument for asking for additional funding from the town as necessary.
Okay, next question is for Elizabeth. How do you feel about the dual-language program that is being looked at for Hudson schools?
I'm excited. We've been looking at this program for a number of years. I know it was just presented at our last school committee meeting. So for some people, it may have been their first time seeing that. It's been at least two years. We've had a national body come in and talk about other programs that have been very successful. It wasn't the time to implement it. But now that there are grants available and the laws have changed, it does seem like the time to implement it. We will see where it goes. You never want to rush into anything, but you also don't want to give up that money when it's available. I think it's great with how many people we have that speak Portuguese in this community, that it's a heritage language, that both our English language learners and our heritage home language speakers benefit from this program. Test scores tend to go up. There were really very few disadvantages of it until we get to money, and then we'll see how that works and if we can staff it. But if we can put everything in place, I think it'll be a wonderful program, and I'd hate to lose it, but I don't want to rush implementation either.
So dual-language programs, I think, are really exciting in a lot of ways. There are challenges to implementation. I have many patients who are in the dual-language programs in the various surrounding towns. And I've heard a lot of really positive things. There are also challenges with regard to kids who have any kind of learning challenge. There are, my experience with my patients and their friends is that if not done well, it can really heighten a significant amount of anxiety for kids and can sometimes lead to school refusal. But I think in large part, it can be a really amazing program and a really wonderful addition to a community, especially a community like Hudson where there are, you know, a large percentage of children whose, you know, whose first language is something other than English. And so to me, I think it's a really exciting opportunity. I was really pleased to hear about it at the last school committee meeting. I think a lot of it's going to, the devil's in the details. It's going to largely come down to the specifics around implementation, how it's going to be rolled out across the district, what's going to happen to the class size of the English-only classes, just to make sure that you're, you know, not stealing from Peter to pay Paul, kind of an idea. But I think there's a lot of opportunity, and it's certainly something worth exploring.
I'm really excited about the dual-language program. I think it's a great opportunity for our students. I think Rebecca hit on the point about implementation. The presentations we've gotten on this topic, it all comes down to doing it well, doing it right. I think we're taking the time. I don't know if I'd say it's, we've learned from our past in terms of maybe slowing things down a bit and making sure we do do it right. I think this, all the data shows that there are benefits to this. It's a global environment we live in. And multiple languages for our students are only going to benefit them in the long run. There are so many positive data points that support the rollout of a dual-language program. So I think, I wish I were going to be in kindergarten. What year is it, 2020, when we're thinking about rolling it out? Or first grade, wherever we roll it out? Because I would love to take advantage of that, even though I hated Spanish in high school. So I just see it as a positive for our students, a new opportunity that would benefit them in the long run. I really don't see any drawbacks. There are things we need to watch out for as we do it. And I think that that will be addressed through the plan of implementation. One of the main questions I had when we last heard about the idea of the dual-language program is what research is out there about what is well-implemented for a program? Because it's all contingent on it being well-implemented. So I think that's going to, for me, that would be a key focus. How do we make sure it's implemented well so it's effective for students?
Okay, next question is for Rebecca. Education is more than numbers and a balanced budget. What educational values do you want the district to be known for?
So I mean, to me, the, there's a lot of benefit to having a system of education that's focused on developing a love of learning in a child as well as offering lots of varied opportunities for kids to have multiple exposures, to multiple experiences so that they are able to explore the things that they are good at but also be challenged in a way that is going to enhance their functioning and overall development. To me, I think the core value that I'm always looking for in an education system is how the culture of the district supports their mission. Because there's a lot of, you know, there's a lot to be said about the culture of a school district. And I don't mean, I mean really like the environment in which teachers function, the amount of support that teachers feel from the district, the ways in which the families feel connected to the decisions that are being made in the district. And to me, I think, you know, the districts in which I've worked where there's been a real strong sense of community have always felt to be more successful. There's been a lot more flexibility in developing new programs, in modifying things when there's a strong, when there's a culture of collaboration, when there's a culture of community. And to me, that's really the biggest, that's one of the biggest values that I look for in education.
Steve?
So I echo most of what Rebecca said, if not all. But for me, I want this district to be recognized as one that provides diverse experiences for our students because I think that that benefits them and has a lot of benefits in the long run. I really would love for our students and people to recognize our students as being curious because I think that throughout life, that benefits anyone. Just being inquisitive and looking for answers, trying to figure things out, that's so important. And Rebecca hit on culture. I will say that I think culture is hugely important. And I think moving forward, we do need to spend more time and energy fostering a culture of team, if you will, within the district. That is part of the district improvement plan. But that includes families, staff, ourselves, whoever it might be. But creating more of a family and team approach to things, I think that that might be an area we could definitely improve. And from the outside, it could potentially be viewed as that doesn't exist today, as much as it could. And that's unfortunate because I think we have a lot of really passionate people who all want to do the right things. And it's really just getting in the room and talking about it. Communication is so important in so many different ways. But building that culture is key. But if I had to kind of narrow it down to two things, it'd be we offer diverse experiences that benefit our students, and we produce students who come out and are curious and want to solve the big problems in the world.
I'm kind of at a spot right now where I've been asking myself this. My kids are getting older, and I'm looking back at their education and things that I thought were so important when they were in kindergarten are suddenly not as important. So I have been looking at the big picture. And the things I think are really important are that love of learning and learning how to learn, not what to learn. You can take any class that they're in right now. They're probably not going to need those specifics, but they're going to take away how they learned that material and what they learned about themselves in that class. I think it's important that we provide learning challenges at all levels. Kids need to be able to extend themselves out of their comfort zone, but just a bit. So we need to know where that zone is. And we need to create good citizens, good global citizens. I want my kids to be good friends. I want my kids to be good people. I want them to be able to take risks and celebrate failure and look at that as learning opportunities. And I think that that is within all learning, no matter what class they're in.
Okay, next question for Steve. How important do you believe athletics is to the educational process?
That's kind of close to me because I played sports in Hudson. I played hockey in high school and had some great experiences. Loved it. Just some of the memories, I won't get into them because they're probably not appropriate for this forum. But you just carry that with you through life, the camaraderie you build with teammates, your counterparts. It's critical. It's not classroom learning, but it is a critical part of growing up, learning to work together. That's one thing sports gives you, reaching common goals, learning to fail together, which means, you know, one person may have made a mistake, but you pick them up. You don't let them fall down. All of that comes through in sports. And I, I mean, Hudson sports mean a lot to me. I don't go to a town, but it's a big part of my past. And wouldn't want to see cuts there, for sure. For me, it would be a priority to go back to the zero-based. I wouldn't necessarily want to cut that in favor of other things. There may be a point where we need to make that decision, but we'll see. But it wouldn't be an easy decision for me to make personally.
Again, I go back and reflect on my kids and their friends. I was never an athlete. I don't understand athletics. And I now see how important it is now that my kids are taking part in it. I have one kid that's an athlete, and he knows for that. And one kid that I would say is not so much an athlete, but being on a team has taught her so much. You learn how to be responsible, teamwork. For a lot of these kids, it's their reason to go to school. And if we can't teach them in the classroom, we can teach them on the field. And so we need our athletics. We need to make them successful. And we need to look at them as part of our school day. The school day should not end when the bell rings at the end of academic classes.
So I would agree. I think that athletics can be a really important part of a student's life. I think as Stephen and Liz have both mentioned, you know, there's something about being part of a team. It encourages conflict resolution. There's a lot of peer mediation that kind of happens just inherently through the process. There's that whole shared experience of winning together, losing together. It really is an opportunity for kids to crystallize their ability to develop some resilience, right? To be, become, to learn how to be a good sportsman is a really critical piece of child's development. At the same time, I think there's a balance, right? And so I think it's really important to make sure that physical activity and the opportunity to be physically active is kind of imbued through the course of the school day and through the school curriculum, making sure that there's greater opportunity for kids who aren't able to participate in after-school sports to have the same similar kinds of activities throughout the school day. So more, you know, more varied, you know, wellness in gym classes, physical education, those kinds of things. So while I totally support athletics, and I think that there's a huge value add there, it seems to me that if we're only looking there for that kind of outlet, it's a little bit self-limiting. But I think agreed that there's something about the community that is developed within a team that can be really powerful for kids. And as Liz mentioned, for some kids, it really is the driving force between making them go to school or not go to school. Having them, you know, develop those relationships and foster those connections with their peers can really be, in some cases, life-saving. And it offers opportunities for kids to connect with each other and develop those kinds of really strong, sometimes lifelong, relationships.
Okay, next question is for Elizabeth. What do you think the school committee has done well? And what do you think that they need to work on?
Actually have a little cheat sheet on this one. I think that we have really looked at where our needs were and looked at meeting those needs. We've added social-emotional classrooms in the younger grades as well as language-based classrooms that are having consultation from Landmark School that is keeping more kids within the district. We no longer have to send them out. And there are kids, we want to keep them here. We have full-day kindergarten now. I think that was a major achievement. Bringing STEM into our younger grades. It's important we have it in the older grades, but I think it's really important that we're bringing it into the younger grades. We've brought in a grant writer who's brought in over $1 million in grants, allowing us to extend programs. We've done critical policy updates. Some of our policies were 30 years old. And what I think we could do better is community engagement. It's something you're always working on. We have added it to our strategic goals subcommittee. So I think we have more of a game plan now of how we can go about that. We're always looking for new ideas. I think we're open. I think that's one of the things we do well, is we are open. I mean, there's nothing set in stone. We want to know what's going on. We want to know what's going on in schools. We want to know what's going on in our town, and we want to meet those needs.
So from my observation, which is, you know, I only have recently become interested in participating in school committee meetings and attending. And so what seems like goes well is that there is some frank conversation in amongst the committee members, which is always nice to see. I think it's always reassuring and heartening to me to see when there's a varied, when there are varied opinions on a committee. Anytime... Anytime it becomes an echo chamber is a little bit concerning. You know, things tend to not move forward and there's a lot of negative or problematic decisions that tend to be made when it becomes an echo chamber. So having some diversity of opinion, I think is always really helpful. I would agree with Liz that I think what could improve is the ways in which the school committee has communicated with the, communicated and engaged with the community at large. My, you know, through my experience over this last year or so, kind of becoming more familiar with the schools and the school committee, it does seem like there are a lot of opportunities to improve engagement with the community, to get more parent involvement, to get more parent feedback, to, you know, as Liz mentioned, I think it's really wonderful to hear that there's a much more active and intentional effort to engage with the parents and the family members and community members at large because there's a lot to be gained through that. This is, you know, a school district is more than just the school committee members and the staff and the kids. It really is, it's really the, one of the, you know, one of the hallmarks of a, of a strong community is to have a strong connection to the schools and to allow the community to feel that they are an active member and participant in that process.
So Liz hit on a lot of the things kind of that we've done well. So I probably won't spend as much time there. It's not that we haven't done some things well. I guess what I would say is Rebecca mentioned frank conversation and differing opinions on the committee. I think that to her point, that's very healthy. I think we have had more dialogue recently. I think we've taken steps to try to improve communication. That's one of the goals the school committee set out with this year. We've solicited feedback from families about how we could potentially do that. A couple of things have been implemented because of that, still in the early phases, but we're working to do regular forums with community members to get their input on different topics. We did one recently. We also recently introduced a newsletter, an email newsletter. And it's not perfect because not everyone gets it. Everyone gets a lot of email, but the idea is it's another way to get information out to folks. And we're committed to doing that every month. And for me, I mean, I really personally value the interaction with people. So I actually appreciate when people reach out to me one-on-one. I've met with parents one-on-one, I've met with staff one-on-one when they've reached out to me. I personally can't reach out to every individual parent or grandparent to see if they want to meet, but if anyone ever wants to, I try to make the time because to me, your opinions matter. We both have an interest in the education of the students in Hudson and I want to have your input and I want to be able to take that into consideration as decisions are made. And I feel like I've done a fairly decent job of that and have been commended for it to some extent from different folks, but I think everyone's voice should be heard.
Okay, next question is for Rebecca. How do you see the vocational school in the big educational picture? And should there be more encouragement for the students to go there?
So vocational schools really have increased in popularity over the last, you know, several years. I think, so my experience is that they are a really invaluable part of the education system. When I was in high school, it was not really an opportunity, it wasn't seen as the opportunity that it is now. I think now kids really see it as an opportunity to get a lot of more practical skills, a little bit more insight into maybe deciding where they might want to spend their time and energy as they move on to higher education or maybe make the decision to pursue a trade and start their career. And so I think it's a wonderful thing that we have several vocational schools in the area that kids are able to choose from and have the opportunity to participate and attend. At the same time, it detracts from the opportunities that we have within the district. So it does seem like there's a balance between making sure that we, as a district, offer opportunities that are similar, but you could never, you can't compete. It's just the demands are different, the opportunities are different, the funding is different, there's a lot of things that are different. And so it does seem like there's a, I don't, I think that there are some kids who really benefit from that more project-based pragmatic, skills-based learning that is augmented with college prep academic material. And so there are some kids for whom that's going to be the right fit, not all. And so to me, it seems like it certainly is, it's wonderful to know that there's that option. Obviously, it's not going to work for all kids, but it does seem like continuing to work with the area of vocational schools to make sure that there's an ongoing dialogue and continued communication to make sure that the needs of all the students are meeting that.
I have, I think vocational schools are great. It gives kids more opportunity. I have no problem with them in terms of encouraging them. I think, back to my earlier comments, every student is unique and has unique needs and interests. And I think that vocational schools can fill a need. What I would say is I don't know that it's my role to encourage students to go to a vocational school. I really think that that's an option parents can look into with their kids as they're growing up and approaching that age. What I think we, as a school committee, if you want to put it on the school committee, which I think it is our responsibility, something we can do to encourage more students to stay in Hudson is really, it's around marketing, showing people what we have to offer because I think there's maybe a misconception at times about what we can and can't offer. We have a great number of electives at the high school. We have a lot of offerings that other schools just can't touch. It doesn't mean it's for every student, but it's making sure all students are aware of their options if they were to stay in Hudson. And it's going to be a very different experience than if they do go to a vocational school. But I think vocational schools are fine and a great choice for some students, but I think from my end, as a school committee member, I'd like to see us market what we have to offer and the successes we have more effectively, just so people are aware so that they can make a more informed decision because I think there are areas where maybe not doing that as well as we could.
Vocational schools are a great choice. Fifty percent of those kids go on to college. Many of those kids that don't go right on to college and join the workforce that allows them to work while they're putting themselves through college at a later time. That being said, it's a very specialized education and I don't think every child's ready to make that choice at 14. And when you walk through there and you see these wonderful classes, kids are really drawn to them. And we need to figure out how we can do more hands-on, project-based learning within our own classrooms to make it as engaging as a vocational school when they walk through and see what we're doing. As Steve said, our elective offerings go the vocational school way. I, my kids were interested. We took a quick look and we realized how many electives they could take in their time at Hudson High School as opposed to their time if they went to a vocational school. And it was astounding the opportunities that they had at Hudson. So while I'm glad that opportunity exists, I would like to encourage kids to really think about that opportunity before they make that jump. And as Steve said, I think I'd like them to have a very well-rounded education if they are not planning on joining the workforce right away. You want to be as well-rounded as you can be, not that vocational education isn't well-rounded, but you have a lot more choice within our school and I think we need to highlight that.
Next question is for Steve. What are your top three priorities?
So we've hit on some of them already, so this might be a little bit redundant, but I, I think better communication is definitely a priority. I know that that's something that's come through, allowed them clear. And keeping the community up to speed on what's going on. One change we have made to help with that, I've mentioned a couple already, but we've changed kind of our procedure within school committee meetings where oftentimes in the past, we would bring things forward as they were ready to be voted on and it created some chaos at times where people wanted to provide input but didn't really have the opportunity. So something we've worked to, or done to address that is really, we bring the topics forward during one meeting and then we vote on them during the next meeting with the goal being if folks have input, let's bring it up between meetings. We can talk about it and take that into consideration as we make decisions. And then the question again? Sorry?
Top three priorities?
Priorities, yeah. Okay. And another one for me is definitely looking at high school start times. So since I've been on the committee even before that, I've heard about high school start times. There are benefits to changing it. I've heard some teachers say that it's never going to happen in Hudson. People always, when it's come up in the past, there are obstacle A, B, and C exists in terms of start times. We've never really looked at it. I feel like we need to take an in-depth look at it and that is something we're planning to do next year, but there's benefits to that. So I think we owe it to the students to do that. And then in terms of the third priority, I kind of outlined here, our opportunity is a dual-language program that we talked about earlier and the opportunities that presents to students.
Okay, my top three, I like to look at things that support student achievement. It goes beyond standardized testing. So supporting initiatives to get that gives students what they need to succeed. Health, safety, movement, social emotional needs, start times, as you said, anything that supports them as a person and supports their learning and closing. The other one is closing the gap for high-need students. We started that with restructuring our special ed department and providing increased avenues for learning and demonstrating knowledge. This is one that comes up, but it's very important in Hudson, is protecting our infrastructure. Our schools are a gift from the town. That's money that the town gave us to build these beautiful schools and our schools are in great shape. When we have people visit from out of town, whether it's a job interview or they're coming for a tour, that is the first thing they comment on. And our schools are still in good shape, way beyond what their life should be, and it's because we have a wonderful department taking care of that. That's money we don't need to spend on new schools anytime soon. So I think that's a priority for the school committee as well.
So my top three priorities are in general, they are around making sure that there's a high level of student achievement, not just for the general education students, but also for special education students. I think that there's, there can be a lot of challenges in managing the demands of both sides and to me, that's a real big priority to make sure the education needs of all students are being adequately met and not just adequately met, but really enhanced and capitalized on making sure that kids are challenged in all areas. Another area for me is, you know, I'm a little bit biased, but I think the, you know, what has happened over the last five to 10 years is that there's a real significant increase in the mental health needs of teenagers in particular, but children in general. And so any successful school really is going to need to take into consideration behavioral health needs, mental health support, and moving forward. There are many districts in the area that are already contracting with outside providers to provide in-school therapy and those schools tend to have a much greater graduation rate that all of those needs, all those risk factors are kind of accounted for. So to me, that is a really big priority, making sure that behavioral health needs of all of the students in the town are addressed, at least triaged or managed or tracked through the schools. And I lost track of my third one, it must not be as important, but, so, right, so the other thing would be making sure that there's continued focus and real emphasis on developing and cultivating greater communication or relationships with the community. To me, that's, you know, that kind of underlies everything else. If you, as I said before, if you have a strong connection to the community, it really does empower the schools, the school committee, the school district to make a lot of changes, to take risks in a way that would be, that are much more challenging when you don't have community support.
Okay, next question is for Elizabeth. Boston Globe article.
Wait, I think I started that one.
No.
Oh, you did? Okay. Sorry.
It was a memorable answer.
Boston Globe article about significant diversity in Massachusetts. How can Hudson make its staff just as diverse?
We're a pretty diverse town and we have a lot of teachers in our town that live here. We can go and recruit. I think there's benefits to that and I think there's benefits to having people that know our town really well. I think the best way to increase our teaching diversity is to attract people to our town, diverse people to our town, and I think you do that by having great schools. We, I'm trying to think of the hiring we've done this year. And while we welcome diverse candidates, I don't know how many diverse candidates, so maybe that's part of our process is we need to go out and find more diverse candidates. I think it's only a plus to happen. It'd be wonderful.
So I run into this in my organization a lot. We're always looking to enhance and increase the diversity of our staff to make sure that it's better reflective of the community that we're serving. And to Liz's point, it really is around recruiting. The more robust your recruiting is, the more varied and diverse your cohort of applicants are. And I agree with Liz that one of the best ways for a school to be a strong recruiter is to have a strong district. And so the more, the greater your reputation, the more likely you are to get a large volume of varied applicants who are both qualified but also offer unique perspectives. And so I would echo a lot of what Liz has said in that it really does, it carries a lot more import around your recruiting efforts to make sure that your school is a place where lots of people would like to come.
So the new high school principal is from the, or his family is from the Azores, I believe it's the Azores. I think this is something every business in the area struggles with, is diversity, having a well-representative staff. It's challenging because of where we live. I think Liz and Rebecca have hit on a lot of things. It is about recruiting. I think some of the way schools recruit or districts recruit is pretty standard. There's probably not much they do that's out of the norm. There are a couple of websites they generally use to promote positions. There might be an opportunity to diversify where we post listings, go to more modern sites like LinkedIn or something like that. I'm not an expert in the HR space, but I think that that could be an opportunity just looking at where we post things. I do think, to Liz's point, that we do live in a diverse community. Improving the school system is only going to bring more diverse candidates and people with different backgrounds, which I think is great because again, it exposes everyone to different experiences and different cultures. I always find it extremely fascinating, meeting someone from a place I've never been and hearing about their, their life, the way things are, where they live, and that's kind of invaluable. It's a great asset to be able to have. So it would be, I mean, the more we can diversify our workforce, our teachers, our staff is only helpful to the students because there's those kind of intangible aspects that it brings to the classroom.
Okay, next question to Rebecca. What specific things will you do to improve communication slides?
So to me, it seems like it's a layered process, that there have to be multiple avenues through which the school committee can communicate with the community at large. And so one of those, I think, is a newsletter of sorts, email or whatnot. It, you know, unfortunately or unfortunately, we live in a social media age and so it does seem like there is an opportunity to take more advantage of connecting with a large volume of people through social media, doing that in a very contained and strategic way. There are many other towns in the Metro West area where the school committee has a Facebook page and/or a Twitter account or those things and it's a nice way to kind of very quickly blast out information. And there's a lot of ways that you can control the dialogue, if at all, that occurs on that because as we all know, social media has a lot of disadvantages and as well as the opportunity to connect quickly with a large volume of people. There's also the fact that you're connecting quickly with a large volume of people. So to me, it seems like it's all of those things, making sure that there are, you know, little insights into the school newsletters that are put out, making sure that it's a very, there's a very quick and easy link on the school district website to school committee information, really just making things a very available offering, opportunities for regular forums. Not a regular forums on a regular basis to kind of have the open-ended. So to me, it's really just a lot of different avenues to communicate with people so that you're getting them where they are.
So I would agree with that point. I mean, you're not gonna hit everyone through one channel. Email's not gonna do it alone, a forum's not gonna do it alone, but you have to offer different opportunities for parents to give feedback. I mean, I've talked a little bit about the things we have implemented. So the newsletter, the forums we've implemented, they're, they're still in their infancy, so they'll mature over time and hopefully people will be able to register for the newsletter and see what's going on because it's a pretty good recap of what the school committee's focused on at any given point. I think we've only sent two out so far, so it is really new. We did do the survey I mentioned earlier and we've kind of taken the highest prior, the ways people said they wanted to hear from us. We've taken those that were at the top of the list and we're trying those. I would expect as part of our strategic goals committee that we, over time, kind of survey folks and understand, has that worked? Are there still gaps? The other thing I go back to, I again, love getting emails, even if they're not all positive, but emails from passionate parents. I really do enjoy the feedback. I enjoy sitting down and having a conversation with, with people to get your thoughts. And to me, that's, one thing I can't stress enough is we can't just push information out. It needs to be a dialogue. Communication is two ways and that's not to suggest people don't communicate with us, but it's just if you want us to be somewhere, feel free to reach out and see if we'll go there and talk. Like if there's a home and school meeting and you want to get a recap of what school committee's working on, reach out to us. I'm sure one of us would be willing to go and we could arrange that or any other meeting for that matter where there's a group of people.
As Steve said, we recently did a survey and it was overwhelming that people wanted a newsletter. We have now created a newsletter. The other forms of, of social media were actually spotty, much more spotty than I expected them to be. So we're hoping that the newsletter is reaching everyone and the thing that we're doing now that I absolutely love is the forums and you wouldn't think that because we take a lot of heat at the forums, but I love that everyone's getting the same information at the same time. It's difficult communicating as a school committee, we need to communicate as a committee. And the information we send out needs to be timely and correct. And what we don't want to do is send out information before we really know what it is. So a lot of times it may look like we know things, we don't always know things. We're waiting for the information to become more solid before we send it out. We have talked about highlighting things that are coming up, important things such as town meeting, this forum. We're trying to get that information out as quickly as we can, as soon as we know that's happening. And as Steve said, we're always open for email and we also now have a general school committee email address. So if you don't know a specific person that you want to email, there's now one address that you can send questions, comments, concerns to and it goes out immediately to all of us if it's fixed. We have, we have an IT problem.
All right. Next question is for Steve. One of your jobs of, in the school committee member, as a school committee member, is to supervise the superintendent. What specific goals do you have him for the upcoming year?
For the upcoming year, we're actually working through that process now. So I can maybe talk a little bit about at least my approach with evaluating the superintendent. Generally, there's a subcommittee that works with the superintendent to develop the annual goals and throughout the year, any of the committee members do meet with the superintendent, whether it be in a small group or individually, there are different times we meet with him. And for me, what I really try to do there is communicate kind of what I'm thinking, my expectations of him, if things didn't go maybe in a situation the way I thought they could have gone or could, maybe could have been better, I'll communicate that to him. And really the mechanism in place to kind of provide feedback more formally as we do the annual assessment for the superintendent. So if there are things where I've spoken with him about maybe things that I had hoped to see that we had agreed to maybe didn't happen, it would come out as part of that evaluation. I will say there are a lot of kind of informal conversations, I shouldn't say a lot, but there are definitely some informal conversations where it's less formal evaluation. So we do provide feedback, whether it be me individually or other members and we, we talk through kind of what we saw, what worked, what didn't, what could have gone better. And we try to tweak things based on that. So one example of that is the situation I mentioned earlier where we've kind of adjusted our procedure to share information during one meeting and then vote on it during the next. That was something that came out of one of the meetings, a school committee meeting we had where maybe things could have gone better. So we had kind of a postmortem to figure out, okay, how can we move, move this forward in a more productive way next time? So, doesn't directly answer the question, since the question was about the upcoming year and we're in the middle of a process for kind of evaluating last year and how we move forward. I'm not part of the subcommittee for the, the evaluation, so generally that's how I think.
Yeah, this is kind of a difficult one. Let me see if I could answer this any differently. When we hired our superintendent, we tasked him with improving our special education department, creating a more realistic budget and improving student achievement. I feel like we've really hit the first two pretty hard and I want to, you know, we want hold him to continuing to do those things. And now we need to really work on student achievement. I think as the school committee and as individuals, we're a feedback loop to the superintendent and we need to push those things that we know people want to hear more about. So right now, people definitely want to hear more about the process. What's the process for everything we're doing? And I think something that I will push forward is making sure that's communicated. And something I try to do is ask the right questions because sometimes you might not know what the community's thinking, so you have to try to think about what are they gonna want to know, what are their concerns going to be? And I think I can bring that forward to, to the superintendent as much as I can and I expect him to act on it.
So, I don't know that I have specific goals in mind for the upcoming year, but I think in general, it's really critically important to have very clear and explicit expectations for somebody that is reporting to you or you are responsible for supervising or overseeing, making sure that those are clearly outlined, that we understand exactly what success looks like for each of those expectations and, and goals that have been set out. You know, Liz had mentioned the three areas that he was tasked with for this last year or when he was first hired. And so making sure that it's not just a general expectation, but that there are very specific targets that you're looking to achieve and that there are data points all along the way to indicate that we are moving toward that so that it's not a yearly basis. That may be that there are quarterly reviews, that there are timelines within which we expect certain goals to be achieved. I think anytime that there is this kind of structure where you have one primary manager who reports to a larger group, it can be tricky because you want to make sure that it's not just about the data and the task achievement, but that there's also a really solid and productive working relationship so that when there are missteps or when there are, you know, goals that have not quite been reached, that it's not a matter of, you know, immediately going to a confrontational discussion, but really more around understanding why things didn't happen the way that we thought they were going to and to make sure that there is a willingness on the part of the other party to recognize maybe where there were missteps and to take some ownership of that and then to also be able to identify areas in which they would be able to make adjustments and then not only hit the next target, but also recruit the, the lag that had happened in the past. So to me, those are the areas in which I would expect a school committee would be able to function and what I would expect to be able to promote as well.
Okay, last question, starting with Elizabeth. The district is rolling out a new mission to build, quote, "global leaders," unquote, which can be interpreted in many ways. What does it mean to you?
It goes back to what I said about teaching kids how to learn and not what to learn. Their world is going to change so much between when they enter school and when they enter the job market. We can't even predict the opportunities that they're going to have. We need to present them with challenges, learn how to rise to challenges, learn how to learn from failure, learn how to work in groups, how to communicate, how to take a large problem and break it down and solve simple steps. These are all things that start kindergarten. These aren't things that we suddenly start teaching them in high school. Going back to that recruitment piece, they need to know about the world around them. Our trap opportunities are wonderful. I'm so glad kids get that opportunity. They need to see the world around them. I'd love to do more field trips, more travel. I'd love every kid to be able to get to travel. Unfortunately now, you know, it's, it's pretty expensive for them. So how can we bring those benefits of travel to Hudson?
So, right, so global leadership means a lot of different things to a lot of different people. And so from my, from my viewpoint, it really is around making sure that kids are good problem solvers, that they're flexible in their thinking and that they are able to be really resilient and approach any task with a lot of flexibility. Making sure that kids have a lot of exposure to varied experiences, travel being one of them, athletics being another, you know, just lots of different learning opportunities as well as real-life opportunities. Making sure that, you know, from, in my work and in my professional experiences, I can tell you that one of the primary things that I see over and over and over again in the, you know, the thousands of kids that I've treated over the last 20 years, it's really a matter of having flexibility. If kids can be flexible and resilient, there really is nothing that will stop them. They're able to, you know, encounter any kind of challenge and, and not really be dissuaded by it and not feel intimidated by it. And to me, that's really making sure that, that the culture of the school, that the, the goals and the mission of a school are geared toward enhancing resilience, increasing flexibility and really highlighting problem-solving skills. To me, is really what allows kids to have any kind of leadership skills and, you know, the enhanced exposure to varied, you know, to varied experiences kind of allows them to have that, that larger view that is not just very micro to their world, but, you know, more of a macro experience.
So global leaders can mean a lot of things, can reference a lot of things. For me, kind of what I take away from that is I want our students to grow up to be leaders, whether that's a household leader, just leading a team at work, whatever it is. It doesn't have to, global leaders makes it sound so big, but it could be so small in the grand scheme of things. Not that being a leader at home is a small thing, but I think global just makes it seem so big and it could seem unachievable to some folks, but I think at work you can be a leader. A lot of the attributes Rebecca mentioned are what would fall within leadership in my mind. And it, to me, it's really creating leaders wherever that is. I mean, if we're gonna be, globalization is just causing everything to become international. You need to be able to work with different regions. I know at work, I deal with European teams all the time, folks in Asia, and I think, I wouldn't say I'm a company leader per se, but I'm leading efforts that involve people from all those different areas and am responsible for that. And I think that that's part of what global leadership includes.
Okay, well, sign of closing statements and begin with Rebecca.
So, I mean, I guess I would just kind of reiterate a lot of the things that I had said, that, you know, part of the main reason that I'm interested in running for a school committee is because of my, you know, I have three small children, I will be in the schools for a very long time, my oldest is in kindergarten, so we are just at the beginning stage. And I think in a lot of ways, there's a lot of opportunity in Hudson to grow and expand the district, to become really successful and a real competitor in the area. And so I would really like to be a part of that process to enhance that experience. You know, I think as we've talked tonight, one of the, you know, several of the key things that have come up for me is that, you know, there is a real strong need to enhance and improve the ways in which school committee and schools in general communicate and engage with the community. And as I mentioned several times, you know, that really, to me, is, is very critical in making sure that whatever programs school committee is interested in, in pursuing and proposing and supporting gets a lot of community support. With community support, really there is, there's nothing that can't be done. Obviously there are, you know, the devil's in the details of a lot of things, making sure that implementation is where it needs to be. But to me, really making sure that there's community support for, for the schools and so that you, that the school committee can feel really empowered to make changes in a way that they know will be successful. From my perspective, it really is around making sure that there are thoughtful decisions that are being made, that, that people are taking the time to make very careful decisions, that there are no, you know, kind of rush to judgment kinds of opportunities, making sure that there is a consideration for all of the aspects of the very complex system of education.
First, I just want to say thanks to the Eska Valley Chamber of Commerce, the Senior Center, HUD TV and the volunteers who are helping out tonight. I think this is a great opportunity for the candidates to kind of just share thoughts and have questions asked of them. I really appreciate the passionate residents who, who came out tonight and who will watch on HUD TV. I think all of this is, if we all work together, the system, the school system can be great. And I love working with, my background is in education, but I love working with folks who are passionate about education for our students. I guess looking ahead, if, if I'm lucky enough to be re-elected, what I'd say is that you'll really get what you've gotten. I'll ask a lot of questions. I won't have all the answers, but, don't laugh, but, and I, I appreciate input from others because I don't feel like I have all the answers. So I want to, that's why I ask all the questions I ask. I do value that. And I think as we collaborate as a team, we really come up with the best solutions for all of our students, all of our kids, whoever it might be. So you could expect more of the same from me. I feel like I've tried to be open-minded and gather as much information and make informed decisions throughout my tenure on school committee. So thanks again for your passion for education and I hope that come Monday, you'll consider voting for me.
My closing statement is gonna tell you why I want to be on school committee and why I joined school committee. It's because I think all kids deserve a great education and I want to help. I want to be a Monday morning quarterback. I want to be there out there doing it, I'm willing to put in the time, I'm willing to set the goals and I'm willing to pull up my sleeves and do it because I believe in it. Not everyone's gonna be happy with the changes that the school committee makes, but we're beginning to make some long overdue changes and we're just getting to the point where we're starting to see those become very fruitful. And I want to be around to move the district forward, so it could be all that it can be.
Okay. I hope you've enjoyed this evening and you found the session informative. Again, thanks to the chamber and the volunteers. Our democracy depends on citizen involvement, so I'm pleased to see you all here tonight as well as the candidates. Please let your friends and relatives know what you've heard here tonight and make sure to encourage them to vote on May 13th. I would like the candidates to stand up and to accept a hundred round of applause. We thank you for coming out tonight and thank you all for coming and this concludes our session.